I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so this is one of our favorite meetings where we get to come in and see parents and kids here and get to hear all the great things that are happening within our building. So we're excited to have our awards and recognitions tonight. I guess we'll start.
Yes, we will start with the BECC student recognition video. We're very excited to see our little ones. Thank you to Kristen Clemmons and the Early Childhood staff for putting that video together. Just such a cute group of like grandparents. Next up, I think we will have McGrath. Dr. Grammer, come on down. Do the microphone for you. We're going to ask our friends, as your name is called, if you want to come on down. And then this fall, if you want, we'll pass out the certificates. And we'll stay up here because we're going to get a picture of the whole group. So go building by building. Yeah, you want to stand over there?
So first up, we have Elsie Tar. Elsie is a model student. She is respectful in every interaction. She is helpful to peers and teachers alike. She is kind and caring in every gesture. She's thoughtful in her actions. She works tirelessly to the pursuit of excellence. Her character inspires others and enriches the community around her. Next up, we have Astrid. Astrid is a shining star. She's an example of what it means to treat others with kindness and respect. She looks for the positives in all situations and in all people. She takes relationships with others seriously. She takes her schoolwork and she makes wonderful decisions and is a wonderful model for everyone around her. And next up, we have Tommy Nash. He is a shining example of the McGrath core values. He is kind. He is respectful. He is intelligent. He is hardworking. I could go on and on. He's resilient and always displays incredible integrity. He has been a wonderful friend to some of our new students and is inclusive to all. And then last, we have Christina. She is... She is a model for others. In her kind and assuming way, she includes and listens to everyone. She epitomizes the McGrath values of being responsible and respectful and inclusive. She is a dedicated student who always puts her best effort in everything that she always does.
Mr. Lapsen's going to take a picture. And then if parents want to take a picture, they're also welcome to take one too. Go one second. Don't go yet. Okay, we will have Dr. Eastabrook come and present our awards for Mark Twain.
Good evening. Thank you, Board, Dr. Zilinski. This is one of my favorite nights of the year. Welcome all to Mark Twain. I hope you get a chance to kind of go through our little atrium area as we leave today. And I want to thank the Board and everyone here in the community for the beautiful building that we have and that we're able to be here tonight. I'm honored that you guys here as part of our community this evening. At Mark Twain, we are a leader needs school, which means that we embed everything in three tenants: leadership, culture, and academics. And while all of our students are absolutely amazing shining stars, we have three outstanding students tonight that exude and exemplify the meaning of leadership and academics and contribute greatly to a wonderful culture that we have. So for this evening, I would like to bring up Dylan Conway. Dylan is a young man who lives at a thriving home for his drive to grow and improve every single day. Whether he's creating amazing digital music or helping out as our go-to tech expert, Dylan puts in the work to be his very best. Over his time at Mark Twain, Dylan has shown how much dedication and effort can pay off, stepping up as a leader who inspires all of those around him with his focus and his passion. Thank you, Dylan. Next up, we have one of our newer students, Caleb Martinez Dominequés. Caleb has worked tirelessly over his past two years to grow as both a reader and a leader at Mark Twain. His hard work shines in the classroom where he stands out as an outstanding student with a positive attitude that is absolutely contagious. Always smiling and ready to tackle challenges, Caleb's dedication and uplifting spirit make him a true inspiration to his peers. Thank you, Caleb. And finally, we have Miss Macy Mack. Macy has absolutely grown tremendously during her time here at Mark Twain. She stands out as a hard worker and an absolutely determined student. With her can-do attitude and her willingness to try anything, Macy faces challenges head-on and inspires her classmates to do the same. She's always ready to lend a helping hand, and her kindness and positivity make her a bright light in the classroom and beyond the halls of Mark Twain. Thank you, Macy. Thank you.
Photo op time. Parents, if you want to come closer, you're welcome to come closer. We have Dr. Doug Weiner with our middle school. I'm trying to put my parents and my kids in different places.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Doug Weiner. I've been honored to serve as the principal of Brentwood School. These are four of our wonderful students here, and basically they are chosen leaders in our building. And just to give you an idea of the higher honor, it's not only are they recognized by their teachers, but they're also recognized by their peers. So they've been chosen and they've basically voted up to leadership positions. Essentially, what they do is they represent our school. We just recently about a month ago traveled to another middle school. They represented what a leader looks like at Brentwood Middle. So rather than introducing each one, I'm going to have our leaders introduce themselves. They're going to tell you their names. And then they're also going to tell you one story from this year that sticks out. It could be any one, it could be any leadership opportunity they had, or any memory that they have from this year. So we'll start doing them. Okay?
Hello, my name is MK. And when we went to Woodruff, I thought it was really cool. I liked their locker paintings and the billboards. And I thought, ooh, we should bring that to Brentwood. And yeah, pretty cool.
I'm Gavin. And last Thursday, we actually got to have lunch with a couple of state representatives and senators. And we basically got to talk about what we do at our school and how we do things. And yeah, also, when we went to the other middle school, we got Culver's on the way back.
Hi, I'm kidding. I think that, well, what I want to talk about is like, I don't know, going to Brentwood is good. So go to Brentwood. But I hope, like, the thing I like about being here at Brentwood and being a part of this team is like helping other kids and helping just like the school in general. And just, so.
Hi, I'm Susie. And every year, Brentwood has middle school dances. And this year, something we're really proud of is we're doing a bake sale at one of the high school boys' basketball games to raise money. For this year, we're hoping to raise like $200, about. It's gonna be really fun.
I just want to tell everybody, when we were practicing to come up here, all four of them wanted to tell the story about going to Culver's. So they don't want to care about what all four of you wanted at Culver's. So yeah, everyone. So one more round of applause.
Parents, again, feel free, come on up.
The middle school that they went to, were we doing like an exchange? Or were we going to see like what they did different from what we did? Or I was just curious?
Yeah, do you all want to explain?
Yeah, so we went and we went to see what they did, how they like to do the meeting. They did, we went to their new wins, and that they have different kinds of school times than us. And it was pretty cool. And we saw like decorations or they do vendors. And we thought, they'll have meetings. And we said to all of us that we want to bring some of what they do into our school.
Now, will they come and visit Brentwood, or?
We invited them, but I don't know if they will come. Basically, basically with leader me, the program, they were called white house schools, and basically they achieved a certain level of checkmark things. So we're working on those as a school. And so they were identified as a white house school. So we went, and what was neat about it was the kids led everything. So the kids divided into groups and made present everything. So the kids moved from station to station. That's a little bit what MK was explaining about the noble system that they use. They talked about accountability systems and then also how to build spirit in their building.
Thank you guys for sharing it with us.
And now we have Dr. Johnson, if you'd like to come down representing our high school.
Good evening, members of the board, esteemed colleagues, family and friends, members of the Brentwood community. I am Dr. St. Sutcliffe. This really truly is the most fun night at board meetings that I've ever had, to be able to see the leaders in our district. It's always refreshing. So leadership is something that we truly value. And this evening, I am honored to come before you all and bring four senior students from the board who unfortunately aren't here. So this is the first time this has ever happened to me. While I'm alone by myself, I can tell you it's for a good reason. Because this is finals week, and kids also have activities and things like that. So I came up with a video supplement to make sure that their presence was in the space this evening. So these four students, Logan Hawkins, Ege, Aliano, Zeke Steensma, and Emma Trussell are shining examples of what it means to be leaders with a technique, vision, and dedication. They represent the very best of Brentwood High School, and their impact has been felt by every student, every staff member, and truly some of the people that we partner with in our community. Let me take a moment to highlight each one of these four remarkable leaders. First is Logan Hawkins. Logan serves as our student council president. Logan was also honored by the San Luis County in conjunction with Washington University, receiving the Outstanding Student Leadership Award from Executive Sam Page. Logan's ability to create and articulate a vision for this year's student activities has been instrumental in shaping an experience for our students this year. In collaboration with our sponsor, Mr. Ziad Handen, myself and Dr. Ait, Logan ensures that students' voices are heard and valued at every decision we make in our school. The spirits respect them as someone that they can count on. Logan is a true leader in every sense of the word.
I'm proud of the education for Algenia as an outstanding student leader. I've been around K-312, and it's always been a wonderful experience, just the community and the relationships I've been able to make here. It's always been great. And next year, in the fall, I plan to attend a four-year college and hopefully continue to pursue my basketball career.
So next, we have Ege. Ege is our student council vice president. Ege plays a pivotal role in co-crafting the vision for this year's student council activities. In addition, Ege serves as the voice of student councils. So when there are announcements that need to be made in school, Ege's voice is the voice that you will hear speaking about the upcoming activities. He's deeply involved in every aspect of our student council organization, working hand-in-hand with Logan to lead and inspire. Ege's dedication and attention to detail has been on the cornerstone of our student council's organizational success.
Thank Dr. Zilinski and the Board of Education for acknowledging me as an outstanding student leader in Brentwood High School. I have been here since the sixth grade and I've really enjoyed creating bonds with my friends as well as teachers and coaches and being involved in the community. For the fall, I'm planning on attending college and pursuing pre-grad school.
Then there's Zeke Steensma. Zeke is the student council secretary. Quite honestly, Ege, I mean, I'm sorry, Zeke is the glue that holds our student council organization together. His meticulous note-taking, coordinating events, and ability to build community partnerships for fundraising efforts are crucial to StuCo's operations. Zeke consistently goes above and beyond to ensure everything runs smoothly, and his commitment to excellence has been the driving force behind our StuCo's organizational success.
First off, I want to say thank you to Dr. Zilinski and the Brentwood Board of Education for nominating me as an outstanding student leader. I've been at Mark Twain since my freshman year. And I think I enjoy those, was being able to bond with my classmates. Also, the new club sports team, it's great. It's allowed me to try out many different things. I plan to attend four-year college in the fall and study pre-maps.
And last, but certainly not least, Emma Trussell. Emma is a creative mastermind behind our unforgettable 2024 Homecoming festivities. As the director of this year's Homecoming activities, Emma brought the theme "There Is No Place Like Homecoming" to life with an incredible leadership and vision. Oversigned multiple committees, she orchestrated one of the most spirited and well-attended homecomings in my 20 years as an administrator in the Brentwood School District. From the pep assembly, the powder puff game, grade-level volleyball tournament, and the Homecoming Dads, her most efforts ensured every student got an opportunity to bond and create lasting memories.
First off, I want to thank the Board of Education and Dr. Zilinski for acknowledging me as a VHS Outstanding Student Leader. I am very honored. And I've been at Brentwood my entire life since Kingsley Garden. And I know it's a smaller district, but honestly, I think the smaller class sizes have helped me thrive throughout my entire educational experience, and I wouldn't have wanted it any other way. And in the fall, I went to attend the University of Kentucky. I went to major in St.
So these four amazing seniors have set a gold standard for leadership at Brentwood High School. Not only have they executed a year full of exceptional activities and events, but they also are paving the way for the next generation of student leaders by assisting Mr. Handen and selecting and mentoring their successors. Their legacy will undoubtedly live on, inspiring future student councils to carry forward their vision and dedication. As they prepare to tackle their last semester and graduate, and step into the next chapter of their lives, I have no doubt that Logan, Ege, Zeke, and Emma will continue I have no doubt that Logan, Age, Zeke, and Emma will continue to make a positive impact as change agents in the world that have truly left their mark at BHS and our community at large. Thank you. So, so, so tell me what we'll do is tomorrow, I'll gather the four students and we'll make sure that we present their certificates and make sure we take a picture, okay?
Perfect.
Thank you so much, everyone. Happy New Year.
We're saving the best for last.
So the, the last thing before we dismiss anybody that would want to leave is we do every, at every board meeting, at the beginning of every board meeting, we do a spotlight on Brentwood where we celebrate great things that are happening in the district. Um, you can always access those, uh, by, through the YouTube channel if you ever want to know about all the amazing things that are happening around the district. So we are, there we go. Trying to pull that up with Mr. Dobson will share some of the other highlights, um, for us as a district.
We're at different places.
It's really fun when everybody's staring at you and you're trying to get the technology to work. Feels really good. Pulling double duty tonight.
All right, good evening, everyone. Like Dr. Zilinski said, every month it's a hot pleasure to share some of the highlights from the previous month at the school board meeting. So, um, one of our first ones, um, when we organize these every month, we have four major priorities of our new strategic plan that you guys, you guys haven't heard. Student success, school culture, diversity, equity, inclusion, and accessibility, and unified community engagement. So when we do the spotlight on Brentwood updates, we try to kind of corral these things into one of those categories, although they very much blur and blend with lots of different things. Sometimes it's hard to decide which one to put them in. And so you'll see some of these and say, oh, isn't that what it goes? And it very much is, which is, is a testament to all the work that we do in our schools. So our first one, it was a big one. In early December or maybe late November, the Missouri Department of Elementary and Secondary Education released its annual performance reports for the 2324 school year. And for the second consecutive year, the Brentwood School District ranked first in the St. Louis region with an impressive 98.9% report score. And then statewide, Brentwood ranked third among the 552 districts and schools evaluated as part of the sixth version of the Missouri School Improvement Plan. So that's kind of like the, the litmus test for how the state determines, uh, for how the state determines accreditation and how you're reading goals in state assessments and benchmarks in your school improvement plans, in academic growth and achievement for students.
And college and career. College and career.
College and career. So this was the third year of MSIP 6, so the third year. So they also, um, released a three-year composite score. Um, and so Brentwood earned a 94.4% for the three-year composite score, placing us once again first in the region, in the St. Louis region, and fifth in the state. So these outstanding results reflect the hard work of our students, the dedication of our educators, and the unwavering support of our community. So thank you guys for all of that. All right, so on to school culture. Uh, this is one of my favorites every year since I've been here. I get, I get a nice invitation from Lori and Debbie. And we do our winter sings for our elementary school students. Last week, the Mark Twain and the Brat communities came together to celebrate the holiday season during each school's annual winter sing. Our talented students lit up the stage with unforgettable performances of festive tunes, harp-born classics, and messages of peace and joy. Families were welcomed to the beautifully decorated auditorium thanks to our creative efforts of our school's PTOs, which added a special touch to the celebrations. It was a wonderful showcase of student talent and community spirit, bringing everyone together to share and enjoy the season. Now, this was just last week, the week before, um, we had our middle school winter concert and our high school winter concert as well. So all of those things happening, back-to-back weeks, um, just a great community, school culture event to, just to highlight those things in addition to academics. So student experiences. Now, one of the, one of the objectives, one of the objectives in our, uh, school culture is to, um, recognize, honor, and value our staff. That's one of our priorities that we set in that school culture. Uh, so we, when our staff do amazing things, just like our students do, we like to recognize them as well. So this is our chief financial officer, Matt Moore. Uh, and if you stick around, we'll get to hear from you later. Uh, Matt is, Matt has achieved the Certified Administrator of School Finance and Operations Certification from the Association for School Business Officials International. This certification recognizes individuals who meet rigorous professional standards, including relevant work experience, education, and success in a comprehensive exam covering accounting and school business management. The SFO Prudential highlights Matt's dedication to high standards, ethical practices, and ongoing professional growth as recertification is required every three years. So congratulations to Matt. And then our last one for this month, we're in Unified Community Engagement. And this is another great one, since I've been here, a great, um, K-12, PK-12 effort, um, our, our food drive. So students and staff and families across the Brentwood School District collected more than 1,200 food and personal care items during the annual Brentwood High School Student Council Food Drive, providing vital support to 18 Brentwood families. Members of the Student Council and National Junior Honor Society, that's one of our middle school National Junior Honor Society students, worked diligently to sort, bag, and prepare donations for distribution, ensuring everything was delivered with care. We're deeply grateful for the generosity and collective efforts of all participants demonstrating the power of coming together to support those in need. Another great message, all of us working together in the spirit of the season. Um, this was right before Thanksgiving, so, um, just a great way to, to come together and have fun.
And if you would like to stick around for the rest of the business meeting, you are welcome to. But if you would like to go celebrate, go feel free to celebrate your evening. We will pause before we move on to the agenda. Have a wonderful evening. Thank you for being here.
Kate, did we have anyone submit any comments to us ahead of time? No, and I don't see anyone here to give a comment. So we will move on. Thank you for sticking around for the business meeting, everyone. Okay, so Kate, we are going to go ahead and do roll call.
Mark Sisawal.
Here.
Ryan Dodson.
Here.
Ryan Glenn.
Here.
Keith Raymiller.
Here.
Kazimz Paul.
Here.
Lizzie Spencer.
Here.
Perry Trussell.
Here.
Thank you. If I can have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as outlined. Second.
Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is approved and moves us into superintendent's report.
Okay, first up, we have, uh, our CFO, SFO, Matt Norrid, to come on down with the audit.
Good evening. Uh, like Dr. Zilinski just said, my name is Matt Norrid, I'm Chief Financial Officer for Brentwood School District. Every year, we engage with an honor firm, Daniel Jones and Associates, to perform in the imminent audit of our previous school year, school year ending June 30th, 2024. We submit information to the state of Missouri and we have that, um, financial information reviewed. The report is, is the process of the auditors. And Mr. Kernman Diaz is here to present the audit report on behalf of Daniel Jones and Associates. Just as a reminder, this will be an agenda, so once the presentation's heard, we'll come back and ask for that.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Hope Fernandez. I'm with Daniel Jones and Associates. I would like to thank each and every one of you for allowing us to perform the district's audit. Uh, I want to give a special thanks to Matt. Um, he's been a great, tremendous help throughout the whole process, very timely in our, you know, responding to things that we may need from him, et cetera, et cetera. Um, so throughout the audit, we issued a couple opinions. The first opinion is on the district's financial statements, in which we issued an unmodified opinion. This means the audit was a clean audit and that is the best opinion the district can receive and that we can issue. The second opinion we issued is in regards to the district's compliance with the requirements of Missouri laws and regulations regarding, regarding budgetary and disbursement procedures, accurate disclosures by the district's records of attendance, and other requirements listed in the schedule of selected statistics. We found the district to be in compliance with state requirements relating to attendance and budgetary procedures. Because the district did not expense more than $750,000 in federal awards, you guys are not subject to a single audit. Uh, the district did not have any financial statement findings to report for the year ended June 30th of 2024. In closing, I would like to congratulate the school district on an excellent audit and thank you, um, Matt especially, and the board for allowing Daniel Jones and Associates to perform your guys' June 30th, 2024 audit.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any questions?
Would you like to make a motion?
Yeah, I make a motion that we approve the audit for fiscal year '24 as outlined.
Great discussion. Um, thank you, Matt, for representing us so well and everything that you do to help support us financially in a great fashion.
Uh, I just want to point out one thing. This process starts usually the end of May and then we just wrapped this up about two weeks ago. So we wrap up in about 60 seconds, what takes about four to five months. So we have a lot of correspondence back and forth, you know, trying to meet all those checks and balances and those walkthroughs and our technical controls. So I do want to thank Daniel Jones and Associates for for performing this work.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
And again, we ask for your work to go.
So all in, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That audit is approved.
Um, tomorrow, we'll be submitting all this documentation to our bond council. They'll submit this information onto the, um, federal reporting agencies through ANMA and then we'll report this information to the state Missouri Department of Elementary and Secondary Education as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Matt Doco Farway of liability insurance.
Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, liability insurance.
All right. So each year, we ask the Board of Education to approve, um, our general liability package. Um, over the last, this year and last year, we did have some increases in this plan. Um, I do want to point out to you that this year we are looking at a 23% increase in general liability coverage. Part of this is our package. So this package includes general liability, workers' comp insurance. So the largest increases that we can control are related to our unemployment loss ratios. That's an average of our losses over the last three years. We have reached out to Music, which is our insurance company, to ask about going through a process of reviewing our controls and our risk assessment to see how we can start moving this away from our current loss ratio. Our current, um, loss ratio, I believe, is over a one right now, which we want to be at or below one. So that means is the cost of our workers' comp insurance right now because of our losses are higher than what we're paying. So we pay more this year because of that increased exposure. The biggest increases are related to weather concerns. So in our region, Music has sustained significant losses in that plan. Because it's a whole insurance, the losses are shared among the members of Music. So it doesn't necessarily mean that we have significant claims. It means that every one of the partnering school districts in the state of Missouri as a whole has had significant claims compared to previous years. In previous years, just as a reminder, so five years ago, three years ago, we were receiving credit refunds on these insurance plans. For the last two years, including this one, we have not had credits. So when this plan is positive and doing well and it's healthy, we receive the benefit of the success of that program. When the six, when the program is struggling and losing its reserves, as a member of that, we provide back to rebuild some of those reserves. Last year, our increase was 27%. This year, we're looking at a 23% increase. We have one thing just to kind of point, point out to make this a little bit more context. They don't prorate any of our costs. So we had an HVAC system went out. We didn't, we paid a thousand dollars to have that replacement. We didn't have any kind of proration about the life of that piece of equipment. They paid us for the replacement value of that equipment. Um, the reason why I point that out is this is a high-value product. We can look at an open market going forward. If we were to look at an open market, we would have to stay out of this plan for five years.
I will also share, they presented at the superintendent's, um, roundtable last month, the average increase across the state was 29%. So we're a little bit lower than the average. And they did also, and again, it's this company, but they were also sharing, um, that there is, uh, they have a new school district, um, in Southern Missouri that just joined Music. And they, um, even with all of the increases of where they are, it is half what their coverage, have the cost of their coverage previously under their other ones. So they're, they, they demonstrated the data of why this, this, um, increase is what it is. And just a lot of storms over the last couple of years.
23% is a large increase.
Yeah.
Um, the, the amount of, so county schools especially share what their increases were through shared activity. They win as high as 40. So depending on So depending on workers' comp losses, also depending on the additional properties that they may have added, all of these things are items that you're, they call your assessment. So how our bill is based on our property values and how it's being, so the removal of 1201 is included in this. So the reduction of our property is included in this building.
Can I get a motion to?
Yeah, I'd make a motion to approve the liability insurance as outlined. Second.
Discussion.
Do we anticipate property values to go up from the recent renovations? Or is that our effect?
So recent renovations are included in this. The middle school renovation, Mark Twain, and the Raff are included in this cost.
So you use the example of the AC unit, right? That it's not prorated over a number of years. It's basically replacement value of equal or like kind. Is there any rider on this policy that, since we have all effectively brand-new air conditioning units that would be under warranty for, you know, if something would happen, that would lower this rate at all?
So in an open market, that would exist. So you would typically be given a discount based on the integrity of your root safety checks, just like this plan doesn't increase your cost or reduce the value. There isn't an adjustment for that. Our cost is based solely on the square footage of our properties.
Oh, interesting. What was the, in 2023, what did we pay, like $220?
I can bring that back to the board. I don't want to mistake that. Do you have all that information if you'd like to see the history?
Because that, the math kind of makes sense that, so it'd be like $110,000 over a couple of years, increase between?
So I'm gonna be honest, I'm not a person that's gonna shoot from the hip.
Okay, no, no, I get it.
So I can absolutely provide that information. And I can also provide what credits we've received in previous years. Because what the, what the program does is they say, this is your assessment, so that's your bill. But then if, like we said, if there's a healthy year, that healthiness, that credit, that bonus, that additional revenue, they give back to the partnering school. So we can provide all of that information for the last five years or further, if that's helpful.
And how long have you been involved with music?
I've been with the school district on my fifth year. I can look to see how many years we've been with them. This is one of the longer-stating school districts, where music. Previous school district I was with was a self, I'm sorry. They were a open sale package, so they had a broker. They were a program. They ended up joining music two years ago, solely because the law from the plan and the cost control.
Every district I've been a part of is more comfortable with music.
So the recommendation is that you're comfortable staying with music?
Even with the increases, the recommendation is to stay with the plan because part of our cost, even if we were in a private market, would be, we would be taking on a certain amount of escalation of cost because of the state that we're within. And because of those losses, the weather patterns that are happening in the state of Missouri. We would also share the cost of other weather incidents that are happening throughout the United States, not just the state of Missouri.
Oh, okay.
Do we have any other questions for Matt? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, that is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Dr. Segura with our APR report. APR celebration, we should call it.
Well, I didn't tell you I took care of part of what I had to share.
Yeah.
I feel like if I touch it, I'll make it worse.
I took a couple steps and I was like, I don't know if this is a good idea. Sorry.
It's all right.
While we're waiting, exciting news. We are doing a dry round of Simbli tonight. We built our agenda in Simbli. We've got our documents up there. We practiced our workflow organization so that we will be ready in January. You will all be, we're gonna learn together in line. But we've practiced behind the scenes, so we'll have all of that ready for you to be able to click and hopefully be able to navigate a little bit.
Did you hear that? All right. Well, yeah, not that tonight was a surprise to you, it's good news about our performance report score, but Tony did hit some of the highlights. And so my job here is just to share some of the details of how we landed with the phenomenal score that we did. We earned 194 out of 100, possible 196 points, which is pretty incredible. Again, it's number one district in the St. Louis region. And the composite score, which is the first time under the current M-6 plan under M-66, they released a composite score, which is a three-year average. Our composite score is 94.4, which is very solid. So I'm sure you're wondering where the two points were made again? Because they do that well, like, what did they miss? So our, the only points that we did not capture on the entire report is that we lost one point for attendance. And the way that attendance has been calculated under M-66 is far more student-specific rather than kind of grabbing your full attendance. And so it really does boil it down to every student in the, in the district and what their expected rate of attendance is versus their actual attendance. And then we also lost one of our points under the growth measure, under academic growth for social studies ELA scores, which is very interesting because the state measures growth on the social studies test, which is only given one time. So they use a highly complex predictive model based on student scores on the ELA Math Assessment Program to do a prediction of how they expect them to achieve on the social studies and of course exam. And so it has frankly confounded all districts and...
Ryan's face, I feel like, is the face that we need to use for calculating. Every educator in the state of Missouri feels about the growth calculation and model, particularly for social studies, which is a test again. There is no other social studies content, there is no other social studies test given.
So we're not the only ones who didn't get that point.
We're not. Not at the slightest.
That's opposed to the only district. And we still did earn, I mean, it's three out of four points, so it's...
We earned it.
Yeah.
And the challenging part with that is that does not help us know what we would need to do better to even get those points. It's this nebulous calculation that there's not anything, well, which could we do to get that point? We have no idea. It's too complex of a score, so no one would be able to tell you.
All right. So what gets measured in APR? So under the M-66 program, obviously our academic achievement and growth, and that's through our state assessment program, which includes the math tests every year for third through eighth grade, as well as then of course exams for high school, graduation rate, attendance rate. College and career readiness is in some section on M-66 that is measured by, do we have our I-CAP plans for students, their individual career and academic plans? Are we assessing all of our high school students with a post-secondary assessment, whether they are headed to four-year college, two-year college, the military, or the workforce? And then a lot of miscellaneous topics that are mostly compliance issues to make sure that we are checking all the boxes that the state requires us to as a district. So for example, do we submit our core data in timely fashion, how we completed our audit? Have we submitted our improvement plan, including our culture and climate survey? Those types of things that are expected of every district. And also under M-66, which is different from previous iterations of M-66, is that there is a performance component and then there's also a continuous improvement component. And so the performance component is about 136 out of the 190-something points and the continuous improvement is the other 60. And so the major shift under this iteration, which again, we're in the third year of, is that Missouri has really leaned toward more of a growth model to enable districts to show improvement, even if they're not hitting the standards that Brentwood hits every year.
The continuous improvement, too, is based very largely on our strategic plan. And so districts submitting their strategic plan, writing about it, how they determined how we created it, and so that, that's what that chunk comes from and we have very good quality and have full points for that strategic plan.
All right. So changes from last year to this year, I mentioned the composite score and then also the growth calculation, how points are awarded on the growth calculation changed a little bit. So you may have seen when the scores went public statewide, that there was some news coverage of some very large swings in, in points for certain districts. And a lot of that, in addition to, you know, some, some districts truly have made huge gains from one year to the next. But some districts also saw that they lost points. And so the, the way that they calculated those growth points shifted. And for some districts, it gave them a little bit of a bump. And for others, they were kind of like right on the cliff where they landed in the two category instead of the three, which was different than previous years. So, but that is, by all indications, the calculations state will continue to use moving forward is the one that they use this year. That's the end of that topic. Any questions on anything else?
So as far as the attendance, are we able to narrow down, is it elementary, is it middle school, is it high school, that we're seeing a trend of lower attendance?
So the, the point that was lost this time was the high school. And we are able, so actually, we've spent some time this year using some of the tools that we have, we can do this through infinite campus, that we've, they have been able to pull up some reports for us that are live and seen nightly that help us track far, in far more timely a fashion when we start to see some, kind of like an early warning system for attendance. And I will say, I mean, we, we are small, we know our students, and so we don't wait for that early warning to intervene on attendance. But that is where, and I would say that's the norm in most districts, that if they're taking an attendance, it does tend to be at the high school level.
And national attendance in schools has gone down pretty significantly since COVID.
So back in my day, if you didn't come to school, there were truancy officers and parents were confronted and it was a really big deal. Is that still a thing? Like, I know we get letters if your kids have missed X, Y, and Z amount of days because you're not gonna qualify for the A-plus program, you're not gonna qualify for this or that. But do they, I mean, are we really taking attendance seriously like we did when I was growing up? Because it was a huge thing.
Yeah. I mean, Brentwood is definitely taking attendance seriously. We have a lot of interventions in place at all levels, particularly bringing students and parents in together to have those conversations. Lots of student service type support through counselors and social workers. There are still truancy officers. I would say they are completely overwhelmed. This was the case in my previous district as well, that even when we were to make an educational neglect report to Children's Division, it was often many, many, many months before they were able to take that up. Or they would kind of kick it back to the district and say, hey, we can't take this right now, so you guys do just learn what support you have. And that's really a post-pandemic effect of attendance during the pandemic became very fluid and, and I think a lot of districts have felt like it's become a little more optional for, for some families, that, you know, this idea that, well, if I can learn at home, do I need to be there every day? It is changing nationwide and trends are showing increase in getting attendance back to a more steady rate, but it is still below what it was nationally than before the pandemic.
And then is there still measures in place in the education field where if kids meet or don't come for X amount of hours, are they not eligible to graduate? Or is that even, we don't even hear that anymore. There's not repercussions.
Yeah. That's entirely up to individual districts. So some districts have policies in place, some don't. I would say it's more likely now to err toward the side of let's work with the student, make sure they can show mastery of the learning. And, you know, most districts have attendance appeals processes in place as well. But it certainly is the discretion of the district that they can deny a course credit if attendance is, is very low.
I think one of the things that we always keep in mind, though, and the challenge in erring on the student service and whole child piece, often, many students have significant attendance issues, have lots of other things going on, and withholding credit feels like almost a double whammy. You're kind of penalizing kids twice, especially if they're, there's demonstrating mastery of what you know and then there's being in the class. And there's, so I would say the trend in districts is to, like Ronnie's saying, is look more holistically at each individual child than have a, it's kind of like the zero tolerance policies, rather than coming at it from a, you missed 14 days, you get no credit even if you had an A in the class, versus let's figure out why you're missing these days and let's figure out what supports we can provide you. Because often withholding credit is just kind of exacerbating the, the problem of attendance in general. So I would say, general, that's been more of the approach of school districts rather than kind of the hard and fast that we were probably used to as growing up, because I was used to that.
Did we go down at all as far as our numbers in the high school from last year to this year as far as attendance? Do we at least see improvement in that?
That's a good question. I don't know, I'd have to look at last year's attendance and pull that data and see how that compares, you know, 22, 23, and 24.
Thank you.
Do we anticipate any further changes in how they calculate APR going forward?
Oh, Ryan, that's a good question.
Or is it too early to tell?
Do we anticipate them now? No. Could Lady announce it anytime? Sure.
Have they a history of changing it mid-game, after the game, and before the game? Yes. So it has been changed at all of those times over the course of the last several years. So I do believe they think they are at a spot where they will not make those changes, but I would not be stunned by any stretch of the imagination if that changed.
Wow, understood.
Thank you.
Very much. Well, I'm staying right here. So I have a few topics as well.
Next up is summer school.
Well, just so you know, we set that report like this each year.
Yeah, right. You've set that bar.
You know, these are last year's scores, so I can take no personal credit for it. Here's something where you can see that number go up.
Two points of growth there.
No pressure on you.
But you can never get 100%, you're always gonna have that one.
Right. You've gotta have goals. What we're gonna do is get 100%.
With our side, a couple of students.
Thanks, Steve. Okay, so this is just a, a quick information FYI that we have set deets and times for summer school. We have made an effort to keep all of our summer school programs aligned, same weeks, same times, to the extent possible. It doesn't totally work with some of the different programs, but all summer school programs will start on June 2nd, which is a Monday. We will not have any summer school on Fridays, which I think has been the norm in the past. Early childhood, elementary and middle school will all be three weeks. So it actually comes out to be 11 days because the Thursday of the third week is Juneteenth. So they'll have Monday through Thursday the first two weeks, Monday through Wednesday that third week. We did shift the time to start a little bit later, so those will be starting at 9:00 a.m. We're gonna run it to 9:00 to noon, but at elementary ESY, we'll start one hour early to make sure that we're providing services that we need to for our extended school year program. And then high school, because high school summer school is through the online launch program through Springfield Public Schools, those are four-week sessions. And so session one will be four weeks at the high school. And that's for students who either meet or want to come take that in person, where they can work on the online class but have teacher support there to help guide them through it. And then students also can do the July launch session, but that would be on our own platform. Summer school questions. What does ESY stand for? Extended school year, so that's through special school districts for students who are eligible for summer support.
Thank you.
That's great.
Great.
All right. We have our main court. Ronnie's not going anywhere. We got new courses and permanent updates.
Okay, so a few updates and new course proposals for the coming school year that I've decided to share with you. So I think you've already heard about this, but the writing stipend for sponsoring an elementary drama club at... So I think you've already heard about this, but the writing stipend for sponsoring Elementary Drama Club at both middle schools. So as you may or may not know, we had a wonderful parent volunteer who helped build a drama club at McGrath last year. And it's a great experience and a lot, very high levels of participation for our students. And we wanted to make sure that similar experiences were available to our students at March Wayne. And so the district is adding that stipended position for a sponsor for the Elementary Drama Club. To strengthen the program, it's an after school program with the objective of organizing and directing a performance at the end of the spring semester. And we're very excited about this too, because it will also be a nice feeder into our middle and high school program, which I'm sure you've seen, the performances are very high quality. And to get that interest among our elementary school kids and then to be able to see what it would look like at middle and high school is really exciting. So I'm excited to grow our fine arts even more.
So will it be at each school or will the will the two elementary schools come together and do it under one roof?
So their their after school programs will be at the individual schools, is my understanding correct me if I'm wrong, with separate performances or performing together at the end of the year. Are we thinking that's the?
We're probably interested in like dependent on destination numbers could be together. So I guess it's dependent on.
So if we don't have a high number in one of the elementary schools, it's just not gonna not be offered, you know, because like the the dance program that's not affiliated, it's one year, it's over at McGrath, one year it's here. So we could at least do that if we don't have full participation in each place. But everybody can be part of it no matter what.
It was previously on Tuesdays and Thursdays or a couple of days a week and right after school. So that no logistics were required for parents.
But we want this to be built more purposefully as kind of the idea of feeder experiences, that it's not person dependent and that it's equitable across the the elementaries. And so this is by adding this as a stipend, it creates that structure. Should the person not choose to do it or somebody else comes, like this becomes something that we we support. It's an after school activity for elementary, which I think is also a good thing.
Is there any other elementary club, like we're just thinking like robotics and chess and other clubs that we do have in place that we plan on? Because I love the idea of getting down into the elementary, you know, and starting, you know, their excitement for, you know, let's say it's robotics or let's say it's obviously drama, but other other things as well besides drama at this point.
So at this point, they outside of like goals on the run, I don't know that they have after school clubs for things like robotics. However, I've been in conversations with Flavio Esposito, who presented to you all about AI earlier this fall. And he is working with us to look at some grant opportunities that could potentially fund elementary age programming in STEM like robotics. He reached out last week with a really cool idea about voice activated robots and how we could try to build something like that. So he and I are in communication about that and what it would take to get that off the ground.
I would love us to to kind of put that as part of something that we're looking when we look at the strategic plan as well as like the pathways in those conversations for a five year plan. So the next two, three years, talking through what that looks like. This kind of came up organically, and I think it's a good place to start, but it's definitely something that we can look strategically at at some of those clubs and look. Because I agree, and I think after school clubs at the elementary level are a wonderful opportunity for kids and help parents out too.
Well, Smart20 started some, but they filled up really quick.
They fill up quick, and a lot of it's dependent upon teachers and volunteers and paramalenters. And so trying to create a structure at the elementary level is a little messier than middle and high. But like I said, I think this is a good starting spot and then expand from there.
So we do have clubs though today in both elementary or do, I guess.
Not consistent.
We used to have chess club, we used to have things like that, because I want to make sure we're not having some that are funded by PTO and parents are paying for, and then we have some that are being paid for by the district. So I want to make sure we make sure it's consistent and.
It is gonna be messy at first. Right now, this is an example of something that we can build and build in there. Right now, like I said, it's based on the what teachers want to. So it is messy where there's some that are, it's just what teachers like to do after school and are willing to do. And so I agree with you. I want us to get to that place, but I, we gotta start kind of small and then figure out where do we build. I don't want to take away things that are working for right now while we try to figure out what we need to have consistently. Like what should be consistent that we offer at both schools and what can be unique because of interest of kids or people? That's all kind of, it's part of a bigger conversation. But we wanted to not lose the drama piece that we had started, and then we can build from that. So I agree with you. I just, it it is messy. We do have after school clubs, but it's not consistent across both elementaries right now.
I think that's that's gonna be the thing is getting that consistency down across in the middle school and high school as well. A lot of parents are putting forth a lot of effort to get a lot of these clubs and programs going. But if we can help support them in a certain capacity and we're doing these, I think that makes a lot of sense because we're building that pipeline of excitement from elementary all the way through to the high school level, whether that's, you know, robotics or STEM or even like cheerleading and basketball and sports and other other things of that nature too.
Absolutely. And I think there's a lot of potential, as I said, as we look towards this summer, when we look at what have we accomplished this year and what are our next goals? And there's a lot of opportunity for us to have this conversation and dialogue. We've also got spaces that are done, you know, now we've got McGrath that has some soccer fields, we have Mark Twain that has soccer fields. And I know we have the Y and other things, but it does open up a lot of conversations around that connection and that kind of getting that ball rolling.
So when is the, when do you plan to implement this?
We would post in that this spring, we're hoping this spring, yeah, we could do it as early as this spring.
And I did want to offer that chess club is something you've mentioned that we used to have. That was a paid expense that participants would pay to participate in. And a parent volunteer would be present in the building to kind of facilitate or it was just parental presence. But it was run by someone that the participants were paying for from the chess.
That happens, that happens often. And that's the part where this get, and I don't want to go too in the weeds tonight, but that's where it gets messy is there are, there is opportunity for things that are paid that are after school activities, enrichment opportunities. And there's ones that we sponsor to help provide some equitable opportunities. And we just have to kind of gather our resources and have conversations around that that will take place.
So the biggest thing is we're, we would like to expand, but we've got a bit of babysitter.
And I think it's dynamic because interest may or may not always be the same. I did have a question about, so we're paying for the, I was going to use the word parent volunteer, but it could be anyone. It doesn't have to be someone that's a parent. What about the teacher that is also hosting and investing time in this? Because it was, to my knowledge, a three person effort.
So in the past, teachers would turn in like an hourly time card to get compensated if it's something that is working directly with students. And so that is something we do right now, K-12. So it's hourly for various things like homework club, group club, things like that. If you still follow that.
Thank you. All right, I'm gonna move on to middle school math. So this is not a new course proposal, but more of just information about kind of a curriculum reorganization at the middle school level when it comes to math. And so the middle school math department approach to be with a request to reorganize the middle school math curriculum units in order to better prepare our students to be successful in Algebra I and to allow students to move more fluidly along the levels of middle school maths as their needs determine. And so what they are essentially doing is taking some of those eighth grade concepts and shifting them down into a seven, eight course, taking some of those seventh grade concepts, shifting them down into a six, seven course. And so that would replace what we currently call our six challenge, our seven challenge. So it's a renaming of the courses, but it's also a slight reorganization of some of the content that is taught in those courses. And so here is a flow chart that shows kind of what direction students can go coming out of fifth grade. And you'll notice that they're very intentional that these lines cross among the two columns. So that if a student is showing capacity to be more successful and move more quickly, they could move up to from, say, Math six to Math six, seven, really at any point in the school year. Or if they complete the year, let's say at Math six, but then they're ready to do more challenging classes in seventh grade, they could make that jump to Math seven in the following year. The teachers are are very excited about this. They feel like it's going to meet student needs much better. They also feel like every year there are students that would be ready to make that leap to the next level. And they're also prepared to put together some online modules for summer preparation that they would recommend to families. The students are going to transition kind of from that left handed column to the right handed column in order to to learn the concepts that they may not have gotten in their previous school year. So I do want to point out that what this, the one change that this does make from what we have now, besides simply renaming these and shifting the content, is that currently at eighth grade, we have Math eight, we have A challenge, and we have Algebra I. And so under this model, we wouldn't have that eighth grade challenge course anymore. Students would go to Math eight or they would go into Algebra I. And for a student who's kind of on the bubble, they could meet with that student and parents. They could encourage them to try those online modules over the summer. If they felt like there's a readiness for Algebra I, start them there. And again, if they're not successful, then there's that fluidity where they could move into the course that's more appropriate for them. Any questions?
So will this be explained to the fifth graders or the fifth grade parents? And if not, maybe we could start this conversation at the spring conferences. Only because I know of a couple of parents that have approached me that are thinking of going somewhere else because of examples just like this that said that they have enquired but have not heard back, that this is going to be an option. So I think anything that we can do to have these conversations in fifth grade even now, because there's decisions being made and then reiterating it in spring conference, I think will help us and then help these families because they're they're just wanting to make sure the challenge is going to be there for some of them. So I think if we can just get in front of it and even get this out to elementary now and then tweak it or finalize it or revisit it come their final spring conference, I think would be really beneficial to everyone to make this very successful.
Absolutely. That's a great idea. And I think, and also I I think it would be helpful to schedule a meeting with our fifth grade teachers and our middle school teachers so that they understand as well. So the placement conversation doesn't really need to shift in terms of what data and information we use when they make recommendations to fifth grade students. It's just instead of going to Math six or Math six challenge, it's Math six or Math six, seven. However, my understanding from meeting with the math department is that they're always willing to challenge students up who maybe weren't recommended for a particular level, but the student and parents feel like they're capable and that they're, again, open to supporting students who are ready to to take that challenge at any point along for three years in the whole school.
And then do we also do this even across the board in every subject at the elementary level? If we see children that are maybe more advanced in a reading or more advanced in a math, can they go from second to third just for that period? Or is this really where we're starting, seeing how it goes, and then it's a conversation for those grades?
Yeah. So we do have an acceleration process for elementary that is spelled out pretty clearly. And families or teachers can recommend that a student be considered for acceleration either on a particular subject like math or an entire grade level of acceleration. And so that goes through a a process of the teacher and parents submitting information. We have a team meeting to review what data is available. The gifted teachers part of that conversation as well to make a determination about whether students should should accelerate.
So just a point of clarity is, at least for me, is Algebra I, is that just offered in high school or is that a middle school class only? And if somebody?
Both. It's both.
It's both?
Yeah. So students could take it as eighth graders.
Yep, okay.
Or if they're in that eighth grade math, they would take Algebra I as a ninth grader.
The eighth graders go to the high school.
Right, okay, okay.
And we started that a couple of years ago, right?
Walmart started that.
And it's, it's not very common, right, in in some middle schools and we're?
Algebra is considered an eighth grade course.
Yeah.
But every district offers algebra as an eighth grade for some reason.
So our eighth graders who take Algebra I are cohorted together, but they're taught by Jerry Schmidt at the high school.
That was gonna be my next question. Thank you.
And they take in, and of course, in band as well because it's a high school credit.
Yeah.
So the eighth graders are not seated with freshmen?
No, so I do, my understanding is that historically, like when a schedule required it for a student schedule, that they may place ninth grader in that eighth grade class. The curriculum is the same. It's just the Algebra I curriculum, but they do keep those eighth graders together. All right. And then finally, we've got a couple of new high school course proposals to bring to you. So actually, the first one that's listed there is not technically a new course. It's already in the high school course catalog. But it's been a number of years since we've offered it. A previous computer science teacher was trained and certified to teach this Project Lead the Way Computer Science Principles. That person is no longer in Brentwood. And what we have this year with Jim Simon's Project Lead the Way courses, we have Computer Science Essentials. And so that was a new course this year, which has been really successful. In the Project Lead the Way sequence, the next course would be this Computer Science Principles course. So it's already in our course catalog, but we haven't offered it for a number of, I shouldn't say we haven't offered it. It's been in the catalog, but it hasn't had enough interest to make. Now we have an introductory course before that, so we do expect there's going to be interest in the Computer Science Principles course. And that would be for advanced credit or AP credit. Project Lead the Way has a partnership with the College Board where their computer science courses can be taught as AP courses. So students would have the option of doing one or both. And along with that, next year, we hope to introduce an Intro to Robotics course. And so I'm gonna jump to the next slide to show you how these all kind of fit together. So the Computer Science Essentials course, the one that's new this year, is very much an introductory computer science course. And so the students don't go too deep into any programming language. They dabble with a couple of different ones. They, Dr. Zlinski and I were invited earlier this year to see some game design that they had done. And so it's really introducing students to what's possible in computer science. So this is a recommended sequence that we're kind of still working through with the high school staff about, you know, do we, we don't necessarily want to have too many prerequisites. We want these courses to be open, but we also want a recommended pathway that lands in some type of capstone experience. And so following that Computer Science Essentials course, we also have a computer programming course that Jerry Schmidt teaches right now that is a deeper dive into actual programming language. And then this robotics course would be then introducing to students the concept of how do you actually manipulate physical pieces with the programming language that you've learned. And so the proposed robotics course would use an existing curriculum from Rev Robotics. It is introductory in the sense that students should have some background in programming language, but they don't ever have to have built a robot before. And then with those three courses that could be offered to students, again, they may not need to take all three of those. We were kind of seeing how the the curriculum would align. But our goal is that students who have a real passion or interest in computer science and robotics, that by the time they are seniors, they could take the Computer Science Principles Advanced Credit or AP course and/or eventually we'd love to to introduce a catalyst option for those students where they can do an internship. They could do some type of passion projects. They could partner with somebody who's in the computer science industry, get course credit while doing some real world learning and applying their skills. So we're excited that the robotics course also is going to pair nicely with our robotics club, which has very high interest at Brentwood High School. And so there would be some co-curricular opportunities there as well for students who maybe aren't in the club right now, but they never had the opportunity to take a course or they're being introduced to robotics in the course and then they end up joining the team.
So are we taking anything out of our schedule to put any of this in?
So that's a great question. As I understand it, the course catalog, we were not removing anything from the course catalog, but there is an implicit understanding that because we are a small school, there may not be high enough interest for these to make every year. And so one thing that we're gonna be doing in in January with the high school and middle school admin to the counselors is we're going to do some course mapping and look at everything we offer, sixth through 12th grade. What is the sequence that those are offered in? And where do we have gaps? And where do we maybe need to identify some courses that perhaps are only offered every other year to make sure that students have an opportunity and they don't get to senior year and not enough kids enrolled, sorry, you can't take it. It's kind of like colleges when they put up their course catalog, they identify, you know, it's only offered in fall semester, it's offered this year. So that's what we hope to to come up with, like I said, in January with that course mapping is a consistent plan that we can then develop over the course of the next year to take students and families and say, here are all the pathways, here's when these courses will be offered, and what order to take them in or if there's flexibility in that order.
So you mentioned, I'm sorry, you mentioned, is it an AP course or would it be a college credit course?
Both.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So Project Lead the Way, their computer science courses are certified as AP by the College Board. So any teacher who's gone through the core training for Project Lead the Way, by default, is a certified AP teacher.
Oh, okay.
So students can choose to take the AP exam at the end of the year.
Got it.
Because our Brentwood computer science courses also have the partnership with, and I believe it's Singus Community College for computer science. I may be wrong about that, but we already have that partnership for the advanced college credit.
Perfect, okay.
So students can choose to, yeah, to enroll for that college credit.
That's great.
Are these semester classes or year-long classes?
The Project Lead the Way is a year-long. The coding and programming course and the robotics would be a semester.
Yeah, my son takes this, and he loves this class, really loves that class, the PLTW. Yeah, that's been great.
Yeah, I think this is very exciting for our students to have some pathways. And I, like you said, with the robotics team, there's a lot of interest there, and then to also have time where they're doing some of it in school. Because I know that's offered in other districts, so when our kids go to compete, they've, you know, they've been staying at school very, very late with Hampton to work on their robots. So if they had a little time to be holding in on those skills during the school day, I think that would be very beneficial. That's great.
This actually does need approval, so just, we do need to approve the courses.
Okay, I make a motion that we approve the courses as outlined. Second?
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Those are approved. We were very excited, we couldn't like wait to discuss it, so. Our motion makers. Thank you for reminding me.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Segura. Okay, in a much way of anticipation, this is exciting. We have the outdoor scoreboard presentation from Andy Hurtig.
Is he any more excited about this?
Yes. Community's gonna be excited about this.
Yeah, I'm proud of that talking to you about HVAC.
This is a lot, this is a lot for you.
Yeah. All right, so I'm here to talk to everybody tonight about replacing the scoreboard on the Robert Penn Field. So our current scoreboard needs a little help. It was installed in 2009, which it doesn't seem like it's that old, but it, but it kind of is. Like the technology was new for when they installed it, and it just didn't have the lifespan to last. So like, the scoreboard before that, which I remember when I was at high school, had light bulbs you could go up and replace, you know? And this does not, it's a whole package.
And it probably lasted longer than this.
It lasted a long time.
That's a long time.
So some of our issues with this is, you know, we have frequent power failures in the unit, and we've had it checked out several times. We can never figure out exactly why it's doing this. So then the color fading is another issue, and it's pretty unattractive. And then it's also hard to read during the day, like, you know, most of our, it's like early evening. So the lighting is just not so great. So getting to be about time. This is a rendering of what we're gonna look at getting. Nothing's finally out, we're still gonna work with our AP on exactly what we want. But the cool thing about this is it comes with a sound system. So we also have a separate issue with our sound system, so our sound system right now is separate from the scoreboard. And it's really old. It's hard to hear it clearly. You can hear it, but it sounds like mumbling. So with this, it's a package deal. You get a whole new scoreboard, whole new sound system and everything. And it's, and the sound system is also just, it's not just coming from the, from the announcing booth. You can have it come from where the band's playing, you know, a few different places at once. So that's a kind of cool thing. So it gives us a fresh look, and all the lighting is LED. It's a white outline lighting instead of the orange, which is what we currently have. So it's come a long, the technology's come a long way. So I'm gonna get down to the cost breakdown. The scoreboard itself is $22,662. We integrated the sound system, $35,204. There's a standalone clock timer, which we currently have that. We just wanna make sure we keep, keep that, it works well for us, it's $3,456. Installation, we're not gonna do ourselves, $22,900. And shipping, which I'm like, come on, guys, $2,105. So the total is $86,327. Now, this is something that has purchased their partnership, they're part, this is through Dectronics, so the company, it's, they are part of every partnership around. So they're part of Intestin, part of Amia, they're part of A+. So they've tried to open classes as far as partnerships are concerned. They're kind of like, kind of the only big game in town, as far as what they have as far as quality. The scoreboard that we currently have in the gymnasium of the high school is a Dectronics unit. So yeah, any questions for me?
Are we gonna have to vote on this?
We are, so let's vote.
I'm waiting on the lead time, but I don't think it's gonna be able to happen in time for spring sports, but we're following for the fall.
Okay, I make a motion that we approve the suggested outdoor scoreboard as outlined. Second?
Discussion.
So with the one that we had inside, we didn't have manuals, we didn't get a lot of training on it. I don't know about the warranty-wise. Is this $86,327 going to provide us with X amount of time of training, warranty? We're gonna get the manuals, we're gonna get all of that stuff, et cetera?
Yes, yes. And this is not nearly as complicated as the one that's inside as well. So we are, the one inside, my understanding, we're not like working with some of our students to actually get down and interview with like knowing how it works and stuff. So that's a good thing. And we're also working on integrating the sound to that one inside as well.
And could we even talk to them? Because did you say that was from them as well?
Yes.
If we start building this prime, this relationship with them, maybe even reach out to them about getting something for the inside, because we're spending so much on the outside. I'm all about barbers.
And, you know, that was one of my big, that was one of my big things when I was talking to them about this. You know, I said, well, you know, there's a lot of things I don't know about this scoreboard inside. It came before I started, so I'm like, you know? And they actually have coursework on how to operate these units. So it's actual, it's actual coursework. You know, I don't think we could talk to them. But it's something that maybe we could get group students to learn.
Or send them, if they do, like, I don't know, like, in the HVAC business, like, they'll have lunch and learns or things like that, where people who are working on certain units go to these lunch and learns that the company, you know, supports.
Yes, yeah. So they do have that. That was one of my victims. I said, do you guys have anything where we could, you know? And they said, absolutely, we have all kinds of treatments. So.
The inside scoreboard is a Dectronics as well?
Yes.
Yes.
And we do have a good warranty on this new one as well. We did not have the best warranty on the one inside. We wanted to make sure we were covered on that as well, because that first year, there's all kinds of bugs to get out of those things. And if you don't have the good warranty where it's fully covered, or they come out and take care of it, it's hard to, I mean, it costs a big fortune, because you have to get lifts and things like that, and you're using manpower, you know, internal manpower on it, so.
How long is the warranty?
Five years.
So is the scoreboard adaptable? Like, is it a, like a big screen like the one in the gym? Or is this just a football scoreboard?
This is basically a, yeah, just an athletic scoreboard.
Okay.
So, you know, speaking with the city of Brentwood, we're not actually allowed to have a video scoreboard that can be seen, so.
So no, no opportunity for advertisements or anything like that?
Oh, we could. I mean, so we, you know, not necessarily like digitally, but you know, you could put some signage, and we do have ID's. And, you know, if I can save a dollar, I'll save two. So we're able to reutilize some of the stuff that we have on the old scoreboard. So we're able to reutilizing ID's that the scoreboard is sitting on.
Sure.
That's same as considerable value with this, the same electricity run and everything else. But like, say you wanted to put an advertisement up, you could put it on one of the ID's. We could, we could definitely work something.
Or on the fences.
Yeah.
Or things like that.
Yeah.
But we could verbally be doing some more advertising if we have a nice sound system that is...
Yeah, we'll be able to hear it.
Right.
Maybe we are doing it, we just can't hear it.
So as a teaser for a future board presentation at some point, Tony's been working with the neighboring district around some of their packaging, around sponsorships and things like that, and what that entails. And so he and I are talking through what that could look like, and what could we put together here, then, and what would be the things we offer? Is it, and you know, your business announced at halftime of a soccer game? Is it, you know, one of the things that you would, you'd put at the levels of packaging and those kinds of things? And I would, I would say that with the digital scoreboard inside is very nice, but I think that this scoreboard fits the needs. The cost differential for an outside digital scoreboard, and we don't quite have the structure built, particularly to build the content, we're working on it for the inside, and it's, we are building content. I'm not sure if the cost would be something I would recommend for us as a district. This will look very nice, will make the field look really nice, it will meet our needs for hopefully further years than the previous one, and we'll be with this course.
Well, and, you know, we talked about the scoreboard, obviously this is not the agenda, but we're also looking at freshening a lot of the signage around the stadium as well, some of the paint, things like that, to make it, to make it pop.
Well, this has been a discussion for the 10 years I've been on the board. And I just think it really puts some final touches. We've got beautiful facilities, and that was embarrassing. It was embarrassing for the kids, it was embarrassing for me as a community member and a board member, and I just think, you know, and I'm excited, like, that we are at this point having this conversation, because I just think, you know, and we're really building community. I mean, we really are. We've seen more people coming, and the event that you guys did, you know, it just, it's just gonna speak volumes, and...
Yeah. It's definitely...
Any other questions, Randy?
Have you bounced, have you bounced this off of, you know, the boosters, or anybody outside of...
So I did, I spoke with the boosters a little bit about it, I think it sounds like it's a win there.
Okay.
I've spoken with our AD a few times about it, because I really want our AD to give us a good, a final touch to how we want it to look.
Yeah, right, yeah.
So I think, I think we're on a good path with that rendering, but there's a few little final touches that we might need as well.
Well, and we're going to pay for it and support it, but we're also looking at ways to help.
Yeah, long-term, maybe like sponsorship or...
Right, sponsor it. So, you know, that, that's a win-win as well.
Mm-hmm.
You know, that we could maybe get money back from companies that are willing to...
Well, and, you know, we say, you know, we buy these things, but we also have to maintain them, make them look good for a long period of time. So there may come a time that, you know, some of your stuff, or we need to dress it up again, and that's when that opportunity comes on to...
Did they tell you what the lifespan of this particular model scoreboard? I'm assuming it's not a custom-built, they've...
Yeah, it's kind of a, it's kind of a package unit, but it's custom as far as colors and the panels that you put in it. I don't know the lifespan necessarily. What I can say is, the current scoreboard that we have, not that old, but the technology was really new when they installed it. What do we know about brand technology? A lot of cakes to work out, and obviously we're showing now. So this has kind of tried and true stuff now, it's been around for a few years. It's, it looks like it's gonna last a while.
Okay.
Back, like, is the bottom below the third quarter back more, are those speakers?
So the speakers would be up, you see where the eagle is? That's where the speakers would be. Now down below, that's the clock. There's a clock down there. On the bottom of that. That's the old clock, by the way, that's not...
I've never seen that on.
Yeah.
Oh, that's just superimposed.
Yeah.
Over the, so that would not stay.
Right.
Okay, got it.
Do we call it, do we call it Eagle Stadium, or is that just...
It's a lotta.
Okay, okay.
It's, it's really Robert Penn Field, but we'll have to polish it as well, so.
But it can be used for other, other sports.
Yeah.
Soccer, lacrosse, field hockey, you know, at some point in time, future-proof, right?
And what's cool about this is, so, you know, how we have the junior eagles are making the comeback and upgrade. Great, great. If you don't have an announcer in the stadium to like do the, do the controls on it, there's an app that you can give to whoever's down there on the field to control that, that system. And so a little bit less, you know, people involved, more people can use it.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you. That's great.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Absolutely not, we're really excited. Thank you, Randy.
Good stuff, thank you so much.
Okay, so that brings us into the Board of Education part of our meeting. Is there an MSBA delegate report?
Um, nothing known.
Great. Special School District?
There is, there was a governing council meeting a couple of weeks ago. Basically, what happened is Dr. Maplin went through the righting the ship update. Things seem to be going pretty good in that regard. They also presented their audit findings, kind of like ours tonight, it was pretty clean. So I guess from the past, over the last couple of years, it's quite different on the audit, so. They also announced the Starfish Awards is going on right now, where you can nominate an SSD teacher or administrator. If you go on the website, it'll take you a link there, so seems like it's a pretty good idea. And then the last thing is that there's two board positions open. So governing council, I guess, elects the board members, so that's open right now.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you for bringing that. Any board committee updates? We did do a community engagement meeting with Tony in November, and talked through different sweatshirts, what we can do to make things more consistent across the district. Tony's working with students too on how to incorporate some of those ideas within the school too. I don't know if you have their...
No, we'll be actually bringing to the next communications, the packaging idea to get some feedback around how to, for sponsorships, and just, you know, just kind of sharing some of the work we're doing.
It was a lot of updates for the committee, because we had some community members and staff, so Tony gave a good update on what has been done already, and looking for other ideas on what we can do moving forward. So that was a great meeting in November.
We had a recent meeting of the teaching and learning committee, the body tactics go around, and we cover dashboard technologies and curriculum framework.
Thanks.
Yeah, we had a finance committee meeting as well, where we talked a little bit about the scoreboard and what the five-year strategic plan was, so it was a, it was a really good meeting.
Wonderful. Okay, and this, towards the end here, just upcoming events. The school board candidate filing is now open, it opened December 10th, and interested participants and being on the board can file through Tuesday, December 31st at 5:00 p.m. Another huge thank you to Kate Hastings for doing that for us.
Have we had anybody sign up?
Yes.
Missouri Ethics Commission annual filings opened in January, and then we have our listed policy and business meetings, the workshop that Dr. Zelinski mentioned for February 4th. MSBA Advocacy Day, March 11th in Jefferson City. Keith and I have gone to that a few times, so if you're interested, I guess let Kate know if you wanted to participate. And Missouri Ethics closes May 1st. So that is it. If I could have a motion to adjourn unless anyone has anything else to say?
I move that we adjourn.
We can carry that. Okay, we could have, Paul, two?
Marcy's role? Yes. Ryan Duffin?
Yes.
Ryan Quinn?
Yes.
You, Braden, or...
Yeah.
Dennis Ball?
Yes.
Lou Spencer?
Yes.
All right. All right. Thank you, everyone. Have a wonderful holiday vacation. Have a wonderful holiday vacation.
You sign up if you don't want to be third, it is not a political order, you're just being the number one.
Is that bad?
It does weigh weight.
It's a pleasure.
Hi, guys, thank you.
Can you share?
The code.
Okay, very.
I'll probably be in this week.
What?
That's a former.
I didn't know it was.